Mr. Mayor, we are ready to start the meeting.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the City of West Miami. Today is our regular meeting of Wednesday, January 17, 2018. Once again, Happy New Year. For the invocation, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you. Please rise and let's bow our head this evening and thank the Lord for our daily blessings, for the privilege of living and laboring in the City of West Miami. And tonight, we unite in prayer so that peace prevails in our country and in the world. We pray for our law enforcement family, especially tonight, for the lieutenant who was ambushed last night as part of a home invasion robbery. And we hope and we pray for his safe recovery. We pray for our firefighters and their families and our military personnel that are out there protecting our borders. And we pray so that these first responders can always return home safely to their families. And we ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Chief, for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Eduardo Moinas.
Present.
Vice Mayor Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Rhonda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
The city manager is present. Our city attorney, Jose Villalobos, is present. And the city clerk is away on vacation. And the manager is sitting as ex-official clerk accompanied by Mr. Juan Pena, Director of Public Works. Mayor, you have a quorum and you may set the agenda.
Thank you. Next item, item four, please.
Item four would be presentation of minutes for approval for the January 10, 2018, special city commission meeting. And this office requests a deferral of this item until the first meeting in February.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion? Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item.
Five-oh vote. Report of the city manager. I have a couple of things, Mr. Mayor, that I would like to report verbally.
Uh huh.
And the first item that I would like to report on is, Mayor, you and I had a conversation today wherein you have been invited to write a letter to the, I'm sorry, Division of Elections Supervisor, supporting an early voting site in the City of West Miami. And I thought it would be prudent if we brought it to the table so that everybody has knowledge if, in fact, we could be in a position to accommodate that depending on our venue rentals for the special election that's going, is scheduled for the House of Representatives, our District 114, which is scheduled for February 20, 2018. And then again, an early voting schedule for May 1st, for the election that, a special election for that district that takes place on May 1st, 2018. Usually, early voting consists of a period of time prior to Election Day that allows the general public, the registered voters, to go out and vote. And there would be a window of about 10 days wherein you would ask the supervisor of election to support opening a site here for the benefit of the West Miami residents and the surrounding area residents. So I felt that it was important that we at least get the blessing from the commission for you to write this letter on behalf of a request that you have received from the community.
Well, also, let me add, and why I feel in support of this, because it's not only our area, but also the Flagami area that doesn't have their representation. And we, as we know, we need a state representative for our district, which currently we don't have. This is the, well, let me not go into details, but this is a seat that is open right now and we have election. And we feel like the citizens of West Miami and the citizens of Flagami don't have a close by area to go vote. That's basically the essence of it.
Right.
I don't know if you want to add anything.
District 6, all of Shenley Park. And there will be precincts in Coral Gables, there will be precincts in Pine Crest and in South Dade. While it may be too late, I think a letter of support from your office, Mayor, would at least speak volumes of the fact that you have acknowledged that there is an election, that that effect, election will have an impact on the City of West Miami, and you would like to see a voting precinct here for early voting. Now, with that said, there are costs associated with hosting a special election. And we would maybe ask or include Miami-Dade County to represent the City of West Miami, to reimburse the City of West Miami for those election costs. So if the commission.
That was the condition that I explained to you.
Yes, that's what we discussed today.
Okay. So I just want to bring it to the table for, I know it's a part of the report, but what do you think? Okay. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item that I would like to report is Florida, I've copied you on an email from Florida Power and Light that I thought would be interesting and beneficial for your constituents. Florida Power and Light has communicated in writing that customers will not pay the surcharge for Hurricane Irma restoration as previously expected. It is evident by this communication that the Florida Public Service Commission declined the opportunity that FPL wanted to basically recover costs for their time involved with the hurricane. So also, there is, in keeping with low rates and a campaign to stabilize costs, Florida Power and Light has announced that effective March 1, 2018, with the completion of some kind of financial restructuring that FPL is doing, there should be some future savings in the general bill by FPL. So consumers will be paying less for electricity in general. The next item in my report, Mr. Mayor and members of the city commission, include a notification for funding opportunities through TAP. TAP is a state fund that, where monies are filtered by Miami-Dade County and the application, it presents an application opportunities for cities to apply for funding. We looked at the criteria. There is a 20% match from the city that is also required as part of the grant. Mr. Pena, Mr. Alonso, and Mr. Ruano and I have met on this grant opportunity, and we'd like to come up with a project. And we wanted to bring you the concept before we work further on this grant application. It's been a long time since the city conducted a traffic study. The last one that was conducted was done by Marlin Engineering, correct, Mr. Pena? In 2005. I think the community has changed. I think, in general, Miami-Dade County traffic has increased by volumes. And I think that maybe a traffic study would be very beneficial to the city moving forward. It could also put us in a position where we could use studies to apply for future grants for infrastructure improvements. So before we continue to put our mind to this and come up with a project, we'd like to bring it to you for your consideration to see if you feel that a study is warranted at this time. There is a 20% match requirement, which would come out of either your PTP money, or it could come out of reserve dollars, or even impact fees, because obviously, it's a new project and it would be aimed towards capital improvements that deal with infrastructure. So we would have to find a funding mechanism for the match, but we don't want to move forward until you give us the green light.
Okay. Any comments from the commission?
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
For the.
Can you come close to the microphone, please?
Yeah. I have a que, this traffic study is an idea from the city, from the county, from the state? Is it an obligation, or?
No, the traffic study is just our idea to come up with a project. Because other projects that we looked at were not feasible for the city because of the cost of the project. There's so much money to go around. And your project has to rank very high. And I think that a traffic study is something that would be beneficial for, number one, to get traffic counts, to see whether our circles are working, to see where we need potential street stop signs.
That's the key to my question. That traffic study will help us to apply for future needs that we will have because of new traffic?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right.
Signage, more traffic circles, anything that is, that affects traffic in a positive or a negative fashion can be addressed through a traffic study.
Thank you. That's my question.
And if the matching money can come out of the PTP, I think is an excellent idea.
That would be the ideal match. Yes.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
How long will that traffic study be good for? Like, how long will we be able to use the data?
It's been 12 years since our last one, and we have used our data continuously for grants, for our comp plan, for the circle projects that we completed. We were funded by the state of Florida. So there are numerous benefits to the study.
So physically, the next 10, 12 years, we'll be able to use?
Right. Maybe we could do something where the traffic study could include areas where we can generate more parking spaces based on traffic flow. We can write the specifications for this and put the project out to bid and have an engineering firm, you know, respond to the RFQ process. But we don't want to move further until you tell us whether you like the idea or give us your blessing in a formal fashion, maybe by motion of the commission. Or if you have any other thoughts, we will be more than glad to entertain it. We also kicked around with the chief, the idea of putting in for another speed trailer, something that is, something a little bit more modern. I know the Gables uses a traffic device, or actually, they have several traffic illuminators and they're actually powered with solar lighting. And so they're very beneficial, especially in the school zones and other areas where we have pedestrian traffic and vehicular traffic.
So traffic, a traffic study would facilitate those type of projects or purchases?
Right.
That information?
Right. All those studies will reveal where our needs are, where we have, you know, where we need a little bit, pay a little bit more attention.
And just giving you our blessing to proceed doesn't cost anything at this point?
No.
We're just giving you our blessing to proceed and then we go for RFQ?
Right. You do need to have, understand that there is a 20% match that is required. We would have to actually put in an amendment to our five-year PTP program wherein we would put in a 20% match from PTP. And hopefully, we can get that done rather simple. I think these are the projects that the county, the half-cent penny tax is actually promoting.
Yes, but tonight, just giving you our blessing means we're telling you, go ahead and stand out.
And sit down and come up with a project.
It'll come back to us again before we say no.
The TAP application cycle, let's see. I, no, it's actually January. The end of January is the deadline. So we would have to cut Mr. Ruano loose, have him talk to our engineers, our Director of Public Works, our office and the Chief of Police, and we can convene. And he will develop an application. We will submit that application to you for review, and he would submit that to the county. Now, there is a criteria for these applications. You have to score very high because you're competing with 34, 35 other communities in the county that are going to go after dollars for various projects. They have infrastructure projects, utilities, name, you know, the list is long.
Madam Mayor, let me ask you a very specific question, which is in line with Commissioner Rodriguez. What amount of money are we talking about? Because 20% of what? 20% of $10 is less than 20% of a million dollars.
Right. If I recall correctly, we paid somewhere in the neighborhood of $45,000, $50,000 for the Marlin Engineering study.
Okay.
12 years have gone by. So all I can tell you is that I assume that a traffic study, as comprehensive as we would like it to be, is not going to be any, anything less than $75,000.
Okay. So we're talking about 20%?
Let me finish my question.
20% of that.
Oh, 75. Yes.
So, let me finish my, so there is, this program is already a structured rate. The 80% of the money, we have to match 20%, but the other 80 is already a structured rate from the county.
Through the grant.
To the county.
Yes.
So that exists.
Yes.
The program exists.
The pot of money exists, and it's there for cities to apply by the end of January. And our match would be somewhere between $14,000, $15,000.
Which could potentially come out of the PTP money.
Yes.
Okay.
So I guess looking at the glass half-full, it's better to pay 20% than 100%. And we're going to need this information.
Eventually, you're going to need it.
Yeah, but I think we did, the last night was the same thing, right? With the dolphin, Marlin.
Marlin Engineering.
We paid 20%. We matched 20% and accounted by 80, right?
It's always based on the same criteria. They fund 80.
That was eight years ago, was the same thing.
Okay. Commissioner Blanes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's very prudent that we discuss finances. But, you know, we've been long overdue for a traffic study. And it's pretty self-evident. The number of complaints from residents about speeding cars, especially on the streets, that's east-west, west-east, has increased dramatically. I don't know about how much, but I can tell you that there's not a single day that I go out and about and I get a complaint. On every single street, 11th Street, 12th Street, 13th Street. So definitely, the traffic patterns have changed.
Right.
And they have changed. It's been, been a long time since they've changed. So, you know, this is something that affects the quality of life. And I don't think that we should be, you know, be penny-wise and pound foolish. I think that $20,000 will be well-spent, and if it's more, it's more. Again, this information will be good for several years.
And for several projects.
And for several projects. So I hope that our administration goes after this information as fast and as expedient as possible.
Any other comments or questions?
I make.
Then, then, go ahead. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I make the motion to the blessing for this thing.
Okay. Need a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Five-oh vote.
The blessing, yeah.
And the city manager's office, along with all those who collaborate, all the department directors and Mr. Ruano, we will pursue that, the putting a project together. Once we know that we will be funded, then the next step would be to go through an RF, a selection process through an RFQ. At that time, we invite companies or firms to represent their credentials and we move forward once we are funded. And then we will be talking to you and to our District 6 Commissioner. And hopefully, you can convey the importance and the necessity for these dollars to be allotted to the City of West Miami.
Thank you. Anything else on the, your report?
No, Mr. Mayor. I think this goes in line with some issues that we're also working with Commissioner Blanes regarding off-street parking and some other traffic concerns. I think this will be a really good way to approach some of the concerns. As he has said, you know, he is often addressed by his constituents in terms of traffic and parking. And I think that this is a good opportunity for us to evaluate formally, by credentialed professional, what opportunities there are for traffic, what are we doing right, what are we doing wrong, and how can we be better? So this is a good tool to use.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
So, thank you, sir.
Next item?
That concludes my report. The next item is the report of the city attorney.
There's no report by the city attorney. Okay.
None this evening. Item number seven, Mr. Mayor, would be the report of the city engineers are not here this evening. So there is no report. The next item on the agenda is committee report.
I personally don't have a report. Anybody else? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Easter egg hunt, it's almost upon us once again.
Uh huh. Yes, sir.
So I imagine that you're doing the preliminary preparations?
Yes, we are, actually, you all selected a date at the last commission meeting. And my assistant, Cari, will be putting her Easter egg hunt hat as special events coordinator and start to work on that.
We're going to be ordering the little eggs.
Yes.
Plenty of eggs.
Plenty. Thousands. So, that, yes, that's, yes, Vice Mayor, as soon as we go through the reports, then I'll ask the mayor if we can add the item to the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner, and we'll provide you with updates. We're looking, we're expecting the new magazine from Walmart and Oriental Trading and all that where we order, because we try to find, you know, good prices.
Oriental Trading. Yeah.
Yep. So that's, that's, that's upon us. The next item, unless anyone has any other report? Going once?
Going once, going twice. Okay. Next item?
Next item would be citizens' presentations. There are no, no one has registered to speak before you this evening?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, before we go into the agenda, Commissioner, Vice Mayor Candida Blanca would like for you to consider the authorization of adding an additional item to the agenda, and that would be an appointment to the Charter Review Board as a, as a result of the resignation of her previous appointee. May I add that to the agenda and we can take it up?
Absolutely.
Thank you. We will note that. Would you like to take that up now or change the order of the agenda? Or would you like to wait until the end?
No, no, let's take it right now.
Okay. That would be item 11D that we are, first, Mr. Mayor, for the record, there is no unfinished business under item 10. No unfinished business. Item 11D has taken place of 11A, and that would be an appointment to the Charter Review Board by Vice Mayor Candida Blanca.
Okay.
Welcome.
Well, I had to think about it.
Let me think about, let us think about this for a brief moment here.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Welcome.
Thank you. Back. Mr. Diaz-Padron Jr. will be sworn in at the next Charter Review Board meeting, which has been scheduled for February 7 at 6:00 PM. And it was deferred because we didn't get a quorum for the 6:00 PM meeting. So we'll prepare the oath of office and have it available so that he can be sworn in as a member to the board.
Thank you.
We go back to the order of the agenda, Mr. Mayor. Item 11A is request for mitigation of code enforcement liens for code enforcement violations at 6247 Southwest 16th Street, West Miami. Owner, by owner, Ismael de Marchena, who is represented this evening by attorney-at-law, Maria Allo. And Maria is no stranger to the City of West Miami. Welcome, Maria.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if we could hear from Ms. Allo, that would be great. And then we could hear from our Public Works, our Chief Code Enforcement Officer, and we will provide a recommendation as customary.
Thank you. Maria Allo, 6262 Southwest 40th Street, Miami, Florida, 33155. I'm here again, trying to mitigate two fines at the 6247 Southwest 16th Street. My client, who has family roots in the city for many, many years, has, in the past two years, I think two years, bought over four properties in the city and has rehabbed them to a beautiful condition and has brought in some really nice families into the city. And these fines originated prior to the ownership. They were, originated when the bank owned the property. So the properties were in disrepair. This property in particular was totally rehabbed. It has new roof, windows. It's in great condition. I think if you drive by, you can see it. And Mr. Pena is aware that, you know, my client has taken out all the proper permits. So we're hoping that the city would consider reducing the fines to no more than 10% in the current amount. And there's two of them.
Okay. Mr. Pena? Or whoever can answer the, what's the amount and what's the, can you explain the fine?
Yes. We have, actually, there are two cases that were opened that are attached to the property. And the first case involves construction without a county permit. And of course, that was at a point in time where the county had the building department. It's now the city. So you have that case, and then you have a multifamily situation that apparently or evidently was discovered there. And the violation was cleared, and the lien is the issue that's pending. Both fines to include the running fines or the lien, the amount of the lien, the penalty and the recording fees total, have a grand total of $29,621. That excludes the release of lien that is obviously payable to the clerk of the court or when we go ahead and process the release of lien, which is $12 to release each lien. Both cases have recorded liens against them.
And if I may, there were two other liens and then we came before the Code Enforcement Board, before they were actual liens that were filed. And those have been paid in full. And that amounted to about $4,000, if I'm not mistaken. So, you know, it is a lot and we would love to, and my clients would love to continue to invest in the city, but we really appreciate your help in doing so. And I wanted to point out that I know Mr. Villalobos was here, that another client of mine finally fixed the property that was owned by Bosch and was totally redone. And we really appreciate the fact that the city was so helpful in reducing the almost million-dollar fine because the property was like in total disrepair. So all of my clients and all of our friends love the City of West Miami and want to come into West Miami, but we need your help so that we can continue to invest in the city and, you know, bring the properties to a level that, you know, people are willing to move in here and pay high fees. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. One, so the violations are clear. And any structural, any life safety issues to that story? Or? Not anymore.
Not anymore.
Okay.
Yeah, the properties have been rehabbed. All the violations have been corrected. Mr. Mayor, I have one question, if I may.
Yes.
Ask the attorney. Is the property going to be rented or sold?
No, sold. And it's to a young couple. They're both attorneys. They have two small children. And they're ready to, you know, become members of the City of West Miami.
Okay. What's the recommendation from?
Mr. Mayor, I, again, each case is weighed on its own merits. However, we have time in the file. This, these violations affected the general well-being of the abutting homes in the area. And it basically taxed the resources of the city. And we recommend a settlement of $4,500 to wipe out both liens in both cases. That's our recommendation. I have discussed this with Mr. Pena, and we agree that that should be sufficient to recoup the costs on the file. And my reason for asking Ms. Allo is if it's going to be a rental, we need to be mindful of the fact that a property owner who's going to come in, invest, purchase a house and live there, is going to take better care of the property than a renter will because he has his or her lifetime, you know, savings and investment in the property. So I can tell you that the property has changed from night to day. I have been by the property and I could tell you that it looks like they have put in significant improvements. And they have done it with permits.
Very important.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments or any questions from the commission? Okay.
Ready to make a motion?
Okay.
I'm sorry?
Before we make a motion.
Yes. May I read the resolution, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That takes us to 11B, under New Business Agenda. Item, a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to accept a mitigation offer in the amount of $4,500 from Ismael de Marchena on code enforcement liens for code violation at the property located at 6247 Southwest 16th Street, West Miami, Florida, providing that if payment in full is not paid by, and we can look at the date generally, we give everybody 45 to 60 days unless you need more than that.
No, 15 days would be sufficient.
60 days from today?
15, 15.
15 days?
That's fine.
Okay. So let's just say, for the sake, I don't have a calendar open, but we could say if not. we could say, if not paid by February tenth, twenty-eighteen, then the amount owed shall revert, revert to the original amount, providing for effective date, Mayor and City Commission.
Motion.
Okay, can you call the vote?
On, on the, uh, vote, Commissioner Juan Blanis?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rhonda Rodriguez?
Just to clarify the records, the, the vote is on the staff recommendation of four-thousand-five-hundred. Correct?
That's correct. Yes. Motion, oh, yes. Vice Mayor Candida Blanca and Mayor Eduardo Muñoz. Mayor, you have a five-vote unanimous vote on this item.
Thank you.
Thank you. So then, just to be sure, forty-five hundred dollars, both fines were taken care of with, before February tenth?
That is correct, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Maria, and, uh, we'll send you the executed, uh, resolution, hopefully tomorrow or before, uh, the end of Friday.
If you could email that to me, that'd be great.
Yes, I have your business card here, so we will email that to you. Uh, there is a recording fee for the removal of the lien, and we'll, we'll get with you on those details.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're very welcome, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the next item would be the report on the Memorial Day Parade. Um, as you are aware, uh, this is, uh, something, this is an item that Commissioner Rhonda Rodriguez wanted to bring back to the city, especially at a point in time where, um, our city is changing. We celebrated our seventieth anniversary, and in, this keeps with our founding fathers who were returning, World War II veterans, and so, I had a preliminary discussion with Commissioner Rodriguez, and I'd like to turn it over to her to talk about some ideas on how, um, we can honor our fallen heroes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Manager. Mr. Mayor, I, I did have a, a conversation with, um, the city manager, and actually, Mr. Pena, and I'd like to, to rethink, um, the actual parade idea. Um, I wish, but it's, provided some more information that I had the, the night we brought it up, that when we did have the parades, they weren't very well-attended, um, back then, and I'm afraid maybe, sometimes, I'm afraid maybe times now, we might not have a lot of attendance, so I'd like to start maybe a little smaller, instead of a parade, doing some type of event, like at maybe Cooper Park with the Laying of the Reef, um, inviting all the veterans from our city, maybe having our color guard go out, and making just like a little, a smaller event on that, on that day. Uh, maybe do some hamburgers, hot dogs, something simple, just to gauge interest, and if that goes well, you know, for a couple of years, then maybe we can, you know, expand on, on it. I don't want to not do anything, I just want to lessen the scope of the event and not start out with a full-blown parade.
I think, I think it's an excellent idea.
Smaller, smaller type of event, and, you know, open to suggestions. I mean, uh, I believe, you know, Mr. Penn and the city manager had those ideas about Laying the Reef, and whatever else you guys would like to put in, you know, we're, we're open, open to suggestions.
The whole idea about the parade is it takes time.
It takes time.
You don't want somebody to blink, and it's gone.
Yeah, and, and, you know, my understanding was, the last few that we had weren't very well-attended, so I don't want to start out full-blown, start out smaller, and then maybe expand as, as the years go on, so...
Yeah. Commissioner Blanis? Well, you know, maybe we should rethink this, maybe not necessarily a parade, but a, a nice gathering.
Just a gathering.
And we can invite, you know, the, the Korean War veterans, you know, the Vietnam War veterans, you know, there's many different types of organizations, and believe me, they'll be glad to come. They're very patriotic, and, you know, they're very, uh, responsive to, to these types of invitations, so we need to, to search and see.
I definitely want to, our, our veterans, the residents, definitely, first and foremost, I want to be sure that they're, put a call to veterans for our residents.
And we have a lot of them.
Yes, we do.
We have, uh, quite a bit.
You have also, if I may, uh, some junior ROTCs in, in our high schools that, uh, actually, the, the schools love participation, because they expose their students to the meaning of, of Memorial Day, so maybe we can get, um, a band, a school band out here. Um, we have some of our own officers as well, who are military personnel, and maybe we can have, uh, the chief can offer the color guard and, and, and give us some suggestions by, maybe Pete can, can, can give us a direction, uh, because he currently serves in the military, and so does Sergeant Valencia, and along those lines.
We were thinking Cooper Park, because we already have the bust of the two there, so we could put the wreath there, I think that would be a, a very nice, uh, event honoring.
And while we have everybody there, we can sample them, we can ask them, what do you think about a parade?
Exactly.
And, you know, our, uh, uh, advise them of our, you know, the city's interest in cooperating and, and, um, you know, and getting involved, and, and, you know, coupled together, we can make it happen.
And more importantly, just to honor our, our veterans, our residents that are veterans. A nice event honoring our veterans. So, those are my thoughts, I'm open to any of the, any of the suggestions or thoughts that you have.
Uh, I'm, I'm in agreement, I think, uh, any, any other comments?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, would Monday, May twenty-eighth be a good date? That is the day that we celebrate Memorial Day, um, and the time would maybe be ten o'clock in the morning?
What was that date again?
May twenty-eighth.
May twenty-eighth.
Works for me, I mean, um, as long as it works for staff, it works. When exactly is Memorial Day?
Monday, May twenty-eighth.
Oh, it is on, okay, perfect.
That is the day that we actually have a, it is observed nationally.
Yeah, that sounds great to me.
Okay.
Make America great again. Very popular thing.
There we go. If that is acceptable, then we will proceed along those plans, and, uh, Commissioner Rodriguez, if, if you like, we can call for a meeting, um, in the next week or so.
Sure.
So that we can bring all the parties to the table and develop some ideas and present a budget to the commission.
Yes.
Of what we envision costs will be.
Okay.
Um, and we will take it from there.
Very good.
Okay, let's formalize it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I'm sure we would have a sponsor for that.
Yeah. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Mayor, would be your good of the order.
Good of the order, does anybody have anything for the good of the order? Okay?
Uh, I have something.
Yes.
I am very happy that I live here in the City of West Miami.
Me too.
You're here.
Me too. Mr. Mayor, I have, I have some, I have two things.
Yes.
Number one, um, I'd like to publicly announce that, um, one of our founding families has lost one of the members recently, uh, we lost Lillian Harris.
That's, that's correct.
Um, Lillian Harris was an institution in the city, very active in the city, um, participated in numerous boards, was a member of our community center, was the city historian for many years. Her husband, Morris, I mean, her brother-in-law, Morris Harris, used to be Uncle Sam in our Memorial Day parades. I remember when I was a kid, um, you know, we would look forward to the parade on sixty-second Avenue, so I thought that this would be, uh, a fitting moment to leave something on record that we express our condolences to the, to the family. I was contacted by Sam Harris, her son, who lives out of town, to advise us that Lillian had passed away a week shy of her ninety-ninth birthday. So, um, I would, wanted to report that, and the next thing I want to report...
Why, why don't we, um, give his son a plaque commemorating, uh, this that you just have alluded to? You know?
That one thing in the house, man?
A, her son.
Her son.
A brief, a brief, you know, synopsis of, of, you know, how she lived and what she did, and, you know, and, and give it to him, and that will be a, a memorial to her.
That, that...
And to, and to the family.
I think is an excellent idea, yeah.
Okay. We will try to gather some information, I will contact, um, some family members, uh, maybe I can talk to Sam, and I don't know if there are any living relatives in Miami Dade County. I know they've moved on. I know that her son, Sam, lives in Iowa, uh, or Ohio, I'm sorry, Ohio, and I don't know if they're down here, but maybe it's something that, if you all approve it, we can mail it to them, overnight it to them as a, a certificate of, of our condolences or something, memorializing, uh, Lillian's life and her, her years as a resident and her involvement with the city.
I, I have an idea. We live in a, a technical, I mean, technological world nowadays, and you don't really, you don't have to be present, so, maybe, and I'm sure Mr. Quintana can help us with, uh...
We can Skype.
Skype, or video, or something, so, uh...
To personalize it.
Personalize it, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I attended the, um, the funeral service, and I believe it was Sam that spoke, um, and said how, um, comforting it was for Lillian to live in, in this, in our, in our city, because he knew that she was very cared for, and he knew, you know, a phone, you were a phone call away, so it brought a lot of comfort to the family that lived out, that she, you know, lived in our city, um, and knew she was very well-cared for. So I thought that was, that was very nice of them.
That was.
Thank you.
That she, they valued, you know, the fact that she lived in our city.
Okay.
So, I'll, I'll be in touch with the family, and, and Mayor will report back to you on this item, and we'll take Commissioner Blanis's suggestion and, and put it into, into the works for the...
Okay, anything else for the good of the order?
And one more thing, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I got a report that, um, on January twenty-first of this year, I will celebrate my thirty-five years of employment with the City of West Miami.
Twenty-first?
The twenty-first of this month, I have, I started to work here on January twenty-first, nineteen eighty-two.
You were twelve years old.
Yes! I love you too, sir. So, I can't tell you enough how privileged I have been the last thirty-five years. So I thank you for that opportunity, I thank past commissioners for, for that opportunity, and this place is extremely special, um, and, and to me, this is, this is huge, this has been my life here, so, very honored and very thankful and grateful to continue to serve.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. We gotta do something about that.
Commissioner Blanis, Commissioner Blanis alluded to something, uh, one of the last meetings about our city manager being the longest-serving, and you, you had some ideas.
Actually, our city manager is the first Cuban-American.
Female.
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 To be city manager in any municipality here in the state of Florida, or for that matter, the US of A.
So, my colleagues, we need to protect his cap song.
That's big.
Something, we need, we need to do something here, we need to do something, I don't know what, but, something needs to...
I've thought about giving her a raise, I mean, I don't know.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Or, or just a card, then.
That's not necessary. A nice card, how's that?
Not a card, card.
A card.
So, I...
With a D.
No, you know what, I mean, that is something. I mean, it's, it's, I, I think, I think that, um, that we should do a, a, a lot more than just the card and just more than the raise, the recognition, recognition, you know, for that accomplishment, because that accomplishment in itself, you know, it's, 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 it's a first, you know, and, uh, she's trailblazed, you know, all the others, and, you know, I think that we, you know, should have maybe a, a press, uh, release, press conference, uh, followed by, by a meeting and a ceremony.
I'm totally in agreement.
And then, and then we gotta figure out what to do to get her, you know, maybe a box of doughnuts or something.
That's, that's, that's perfect, we got it. I'm in one-hundred percent agreement with you. What do we need, uh, uh, all in favor?
No, please, I, I, I just want to keep it simple, I just wanted you to know that, you know, I'm counting the years.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Forty-five years.
Thirty-five, thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Forty-five years. Forty-five years.
Is it forty-five or thirty-five?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.